Good evening, welcome to the Plan Commission meeting. It's Monday, February tenth of two thousand twenty twenty. And first item on the agenda would be consider approval of the minutes from the last meeting and entertain a motion.
I move.
Motion by Mieski, second by, is it Berman?
No.
Seltzer.
Seltzer, all right.
Have the same first name, nope, no we don't.
Okay, any questions or concerns about the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Next item is council representative report, is there anything to report out?
Um, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, there were, uh, at the January fourteenth council meeting, we conditionally approved the preliminary plat for the medals at Kettle Park West. Um, also, the certified survey map for Kettle Park West and the conditional use permit for six sixteen Ridge Street was also approved and at the January twenty eighth meeting, um, we approved the certified survey map for the property at eleven eleven Veterans Road, which is Stoughton Trailer. And also approved the conditional use permit for Rossi's Pizza at thirteen twelve Hamilton Street.
Thank you very much, any questions on the council report? Hearing none, we'll move to the staff report.
Containing your packet is the standard monthly report, if there's any questions about the activities, certainly let me know. But it's the first one of the new year.
All right, thank you, any questions on this report? Um, item number four is a request by Dale Rush for a conditional use permit to allow an outdoor storage unit at one thousand East Street. And it looks like we would be continuing our public hearing. So we'll move out of our regular meeting and then continue our public hearing, in case somebody's here for that. Is anybody here for the public hearing for East Street? Seeing none, we'll close that, reopen our regular meeting and then we have, um, consideration for a recommendation to the city council, is there anything we need to cover before we deliberate?
So this is a CUP for outdoor storage in this industrial site, the southern part of it. You'll, you'll see in the plans in your packet, this shows an overview of the entire site. Um, but the graphic indicates the southern part of it is what's intended to be utilized for outdoor storage. The staff review letter indicates the need to have screening appropriately done before that could be um, utilized as such. And the staff review letter is listed as the condition contained in the CUP resolution, so if you were to move forward with the resolution, that, that is the major condition, all the components of the staff review letter would be addressed.
Any questions or comments on the resolution? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for a recommendation.
Aye, so I move.
All right, is the motion, I assume, to approve the, recommend the approval to council?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Berman, last chance for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Item number six is a request by Maggie Ganzer to rezone the property at sixteen forty East Main Street from RH Rural Holding to PB Plan Business. And before we go into public hearing, maybe Director Shiel, if you can kind of tell us what the difference is and walk us through it.
Yeah, so this rezoning request is a rezoning request to remove it from the Rural Holding zoning district to the Plan Business district, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Uh, this site is on the northeast, northwest corner of County Highway N and fifty one at Main Street. Um, so it's consistent with that, the rezoning seems to be very appropriate for this location. And subsequent action is to develop the site, so you'll see that in a subsequent item of the agenda. This particular one is just to rezone it to the Plan Business zoning district.
Anybody have any initial questions? Otherwise, um, looks like we have a need to have a public hearing, what would you guys like to do? Going to the public hearing, all right, close the regular meeting, reopen for the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would wish to speak on this item tonight? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting. And then we'll open it for discussion, any more you want to add?
In my opinion, it's a straightforward request for rezoning that's consistent with the cop plan, I don't see any, any potential hangups related to the rezoning request for this site.
Any questions from the commissioners? Okay, um, so we're looking for, um, we're looking for a recommendation for the council, so I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Motion by Seltzer, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Berman, uh, last chance for discussion on this one. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Uh, item seven is another request from Maggie Ganzer, this is for Weibo World Daycare to approve a conditional use permit for a group daycare use including site plan approval at sixteen forty East Main Street. And before we go into the public hearing, you want to walk us through this one?
Yeah, so this is the same site on the northwest corner of Highway N and fifty one. This is to, um, create another Weibo World location, which is an exciting addition to the community and the area. Um, the overall long range plan, as we understand it, is to develop this site initially as a, a daycare facility, but they have a vision to add onto the site and potentially have an ancillary commercial use as well on the site in the future. But initially, it's just for the daycare facility. So as the mayor mentioned, there's a, there's a discussion about the conditional use aspect of this project and then also related to the site plan. Um, the staff review letter indicated some points that, um, we've highlighted for consideration. You'll recall that Casey's General Store was being considered for this site. And the deliberation on that, um, was lengthy, but the primary reason that they did not locate here was the inability to get an access point on the US Highway fifty one. Um, you'll recognize that this site plan only utilizes the access point that's anticipated off of County N. County Highway N right of way is managed by the Dane County. So any, any work within the right of way, whether it's curb gut or sidewalk or driveway or utilities, all that has to be obtained through a working right of way permit through the Dane County officials. You'll see in your, your packet of materials, a request by the applicant to delay um, or not to, to either install or defer, defer or not install sidewalk and curb and gutter on County Highway N. Um, you'll recognize to the north of this site is the cemetery, there's a cemetery just to the north of this site. Um, but the, the real access crossing of County N should occur at the intersection, actually where there's a signalized intersection at County N and Main Street. So with that, certainly open the questions of the applicants here as lo, as well as their, their consulting team.
Any initial questions, otherwise, um, we can go into, um, the public hearing for the conditional use permit. No initial questions, we'll close the regular meeting and open it up for the public hearing, is anyone here that would wish to speak on this item? Pretty quiet tonight, all right, we have one, come on up. And you can just introduce yourself for the record.
Emily Barr, I have a question as to how close to the actual intersection the driveway access to this property is planned to be, it isn't shown, at least what I can see, it isn't shown on here.
The farthest it can be to the north, so I don't have a dimension, but you can see on the, the very top of the page.
It's way north to, by the cemetery.
Correct. As far as from the intersection that it can be. So it's shown on the top of the page here, that's where the driveway access point is.
Because that intersection, that street, that road, Highway N, coming south in the, in the morning and at other, well, at the end of the day as well, is becoming a really, really congested, busy, difficult intersection. I traverse that several times a day. And the, the right turn, left turn situation coming off of N onto Main Street or fifty one there is not good.
Yeah, well, as, as you can understand, they have acts, they have a right to access to this property and, and having this driveway to the northernmost point keeps it away from the signalized intersection the most it can be.
And I think I misunderstood a comment that you made, that it was going to be closer to the intersection or onto fifty one rather than onto N, will there be any access onto fifty one?
I apologize, no access on the fifty one.
And as far to the cemetery side as it can be on N, that's it?
All right, thank you for your question, anybody else would like to speak? Sure, come on up and just introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Dan Crowe with KSW Construction, I can answer your question, it's a, it's a little more than two hundred lineal feet from the corner to the driveway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else that would wish it, wish to speak at the public hearing? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, reopen for our regular business. Any questions from the commissioners? All the person Mieski, President Mieski, I should say.
What is the, give me the reason again for not continuing the sidewalk and?
The applicants here, and, and they're wishing to defer that cost until a future date, until they develop it further, the site further. Um, that's, that's the request. The, any work within the right of way at County N would have to be approved by Dane County, of course. Um, but that's the request is to defer installation of the sidewalk and/or the curb and gutter along County N. Now, the curb and gutter, it's a rural cross section for the most part on the west side of the street. I don't know at which time it's going to be redesigned to urbanize it further out or, or if at all. Um, so I don't know if, if that's going to be addressed well by urbanizing it at this point. You'll, you'll recall there was discussion about that as part of the, the Casey's site plan review.
Okay, did you have something you want to add, sir? Come on up, okay, you can come up to this microphone here, we'll be able to hear you better.
I'm Jerry Berkwin, I'm with Dimension Four Architects, working with Maggie on the project. And just a couple of things, and you're kind of discussing ones, I think, you know, the comments back from the staff and the city and what we're trying to do to the project, I think are all good and we agree with them in the long term. There's more of a phasing on the, on some of these, because as we mentioned, we're doing this smaller project, which is kind of a, um, enlargement of the after school program. I think there's like thirty six kids in there, and our building is less than three thousand square feet. So it's not a big project to try and basically put a lot of cost onto this portion of the project itself. We are, as you can see, we kind of stayed away from the areas along the street, because we're seeing that as a future development to be a little larger project and something kind of fits in more with the, I'll say, the streetscape and a little mixed use or type of function on the project itself. So, as you mentioned, I think the two, or the things we were looking at was, you know, especially along Highway N, kind of curb and gutter, that since we don't know what we're going to do along those streets and the sidewalks on that, we're just trying to not do that until when we come back for the next part, because then we'll know where their, where our building's going to be, what the grades are going to be, and how we can tie that in better. So we're not disagreeing on doing it, we're just trying to put that into, when we come back into the next portion of the project itself. Same thing on the sidewalk to the, on the south side there. Uh, same thing, we want to patch it right now, so it does work and functions, but then when we put it in the future building, we'll know better what the grades are, now we're going to tie that all together, so we don't want to invest money just to tear it down and then put it back up later. So we're just trying to push those back just a little bit actually, until the next phase of the project comes in. The other question we had was on our daycare, so we've got an outdoor play area, which is kind of up in that northwest corner there. So we do have a fence going around that back corner from the site, and we're bringing that fence kind of all the way down. It goes around there and brings down, it comes down and stops, and right near is kind of where the trash dumpster is. So that's a portion of our project that actually is a daycare portion. So we're putting up a six foot high wooden fence there, solid fence to kind of screen, keep our children, you know, safe. And on the inside also kind of screen it from the neighbor on the other side. But there is a portion in the ordinance that requires, is it a buffer zone?
Buffer yard.
A buffer yard on the area. So we have pulled our fence back in onto ours, like about five feet off our property line, so we've left some additional area there that of landscaping, did have to go in in the future if we could do that. And then we're also putting our fence up. The question we had was, we've got a fence, so we're going to screen the daycare, and applies only to the daycare portion of the lot. And in all likelihood, it's not going to be a daycare down toward the bottom, so down on fifty one or out toward N, that's not going to be another daycare function, that'll be a different use on the site itself. So what we're asking from was just some consideration on not ruining that fence the whole length down there right now. Just kind of, we'll screen our building and screen what we're doing right now in the daycare, and take care of that area. And then the other one is even just on the landscaping portion, we're trying, at this point, if we didn't have to do that landscaping on that backside between ours and the neighbor's property. Up in that upper corner, there's a garage or a shed on that property right now, so part of the landscaping is just kind of going in between a garage and in between the fence. So the goal, which I think is what we want to do, is kind of provide a softened edge there in landscaping, but we're really just kind of screening it from the, I guess, the shed, kind of that back corner itself. So I'm not sure we're going to get a lot of impact on either side of our lots with that. And as mentioned, we're going to be zoned, we're in the city, it'll be, our zoning change, but right now, we've got, I think it's the town of Dunkirk, whatever, kind of surrounds us on both sides, so the property's on both sides, not within the city itself. So those are, yeah, the, we agree at the staff report, but it's more actually a timing and a phasing on that. A lot of the stuff with this little small project, this first phase is just kind of hard to put that on the back of a twenty nine hundred square foot building. You know, the utilities right now are on the other side of the road, they're on the, uh, east side of County Highway N. So right now, we've actually got to go under the highway right now to even get kind of the water in the sewer across there. So already kind of absorbing that hit on the back of this little project itself here, so we're just asking for a little consideration, just kind of, we'll do those things, but we just want to do them when we get the bigger project coming in the next portion.
Maybe I can just help, help the commissioners along that line. The buffer yard requirements, um, the entire site, while I recognize only a quarter or a corner of it is really dedicated for the daycare use, um, the actual site is primarily a daycare. And we don't see any way to offer latitude on the buffer yard requirement. Um, the curb and gutter, I think there might be some discretion there that the council, council indoor commission can exercise related to that. The sidewalk on the County Highway N side, if there was a, a deviation from ordinance, the council would have to act, either a deviation from that or include it as part of the conditional use process to delay that either for a time certain or, or not to ever install it, but the ordinance requires a sidewalk to be installed prior to occupancy. So if, if there's a, a recommendation for deviation, that would need to go through, through the council. Um, we, we certainly understand the issues that they've raised about the buffer yard. The adjacent use, while it is a township property, is a residential use. Um, we have not made a discernible difference between it being in the town or the city, whether it's a residential use or not. And therefore, the, the buffer yard requirements that are contained in the zoning code, we think are applicable. Um, again, I understand that the request to delay that. I don't know that you have the same latitude on the buffer yard requirements as you may have on, um, certainly the curb and gutter, but also the, the sidewalk, you might have an avenue to do that as well.
Any questions or comments, Commissioner Berman?
I'll start with a comment, um, one, I like the orientation of the building, um, the fact that it's on an angle. I think it makes it, um, it's a nice use of the corner property, so it can be, you can see the front facade from both main thoroughfares, so I like, I like the positioning. Um, two concerns I have, one is that if we don't do any kind of sidewalk up County Trunk Highway N, um, and we're just relying on improvements to, um, the sidewalk along Main Street, we don't have any sidewalk connection at all to the development. Um, and I'm real big on being able to provide pedestrian access to new facilities like this. I understand most of the kids will be dropped off by cars, but I don't want to make that assumption that some might live in the neighborhood and want to walk their kids to the facility. And right now, there's no sidewalk connection at all to the, the front of the building, unless they just cut across the grass. And so I, I'm a little concerned that we don't have that here in any way. Um, the other thing is we're being asked as a, as a commission to make decisions on this conditional use permit based on phasing, but we don't know anything about the vision for that next phase. Um, the, the massing of a potential building, where it might be located on this property, how it might relate to the existing parking. Um, so any kind of, of information you can provide to the commission as relates to that vision for that second phase would be very helpful, because I know another aspect to this particular request is an excess of parking. Um, I think there's more parking as part of this development than is, is typically seen in this kind of development. And I don't know if that's related to the next phase, that since we're putting in a lot, let's put in a lot that will actually accommodate that next development as well. Um, so all those things will help me be able to make a decision on, um, aspects of this particular conditional use.
Sure, I'll let Maggie address some of them, but I can address a certain part. So intentionally, you see, we put the building in that back corner with what we're doing for the daycare, I think it's a quad area and it's kind of more what our functions are and better functions on that. We're inver, we're envisioning the rest of the site along Highway fifty one and also County Highway N. I will say more of a new urbanism approach, so we're looking, actually, we're going to, the future buildings that'll come along, they will tie in, they'll be out near the edge of the sidewalk, near the street there, so we're going to position those that they're close to the property line out there, probably as close as we can toward the front and still do the grading and get future sidewalks and curb and gutter in there.
Okay.
Thinking that there probably will be a commercial function, probably one story, maybe two story. You know, the other thing we thought about is there, and I don't know if there is, is there potential for a second level that might be like residential or something up on top of that, you know, to get a little taller building. I do think the buildings, if we can, along the, um, Main Street there, want to have a little more presence on the street. So I think we want something that even if it's not maybe two stories high, it's got, at least got a little more buy into it.
Right.
To engage the street out in that area.
Okay.
But we are looking more for an urbanism approach, we'll wrap the buildings around the side. And then there will be another row of parking then added on that inside loop, so if you take that, I'll call that an L.
Yes.
We're going to wrap more parking down along that, so there's kind of an internal loop then we're all done on that, we're going to go through that. And the buildings are on the outside, but gives them internal circulation for the cars as well as then more parking for the future buildings in those areas.
So the, in front of the dumpsters there where there's the turnaround, um, spot, you're, you're talking about there'd be a loop of additional drive and then more parking that would come off of that?
Yeah, so you have the hand kind of going that way, I keep going that way, and then we'll actually, we'll loop it back around and have like another uh, side going up on that one also, uh, up through there too, that'd just be like a single row and an aisle through that area.
More parking through there?
Yeah.
So if you have more parking through there, then you're not going to have building face along N in that section?
Probably not in that section.
So the building face will be more on the corner and along Main?
Yeah, so it's kind of like this bigger block down toward the corner. That does give us a little opening, and we didn't want to completely hide the daycare back in that corner. So the entrance comes in, it still gives us a little more visibility, a little more openness into that area itself.
Okay. Um, but you're looking at mixed use, probably retail kind of commercial, and then potentially if it's multi-story, then it would have residential above?
I'm thinking the only thing, sometimes we can get a use that it might be more of like an office type of use on the second level, might be like an insurance office or somebody that doesn't need, they want a presence, but they don't generate a lot of traffic, so it might be someone like that type of use.
Okay.
So we're keeping all our options open right now, but that's what we're trying to look, we see that site kind of targeted, especially for the business type of use. We kind of see that up and down that street, but that's probably something that is going to happen on both sides, I think, when it's all done.
And in terms of, again, phasing, um, any idea on when that a decision on whether the phase two goes forward or not might be, I mean, we're talking about five years down the road, we're talking about one year down the road, two years? I mean, I know, I know everything changes because of the economy, but if we're putting off, for example, sidewalk along N because of phase two. If phase two is ten years from now, that changes my decision versus phase two is two years from now.
Yeah, I shoot from the hip a little bit, Dean Slaby was kind of handling the lease on that, is more that. He can give you better answers than that, but quite honest, if he can get the tenants lined up for it, we'll move ahead as quick as we can.
Okay.
So I don't think it's, probably not one, that's too quick. Five is probably, you know, I don't think it's any longer than that, and I think ten is definitely too far out, because we've got the land costs here that we've kind of absorbed onto this little smaller project in the back, so we do need to move ahead with this, just to make everything else kind of work.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from any, Commissioner Seltzer?
Thank you, Mayor, um, I just have a concern about everything that you're explaining, which, which, um, reminds me of my past in a little bit, but I think dates need to be, um, put together. I mean, we're, we're, we're laying a lot of things out here unless I'm not fully understanding this that you want to do in the future, but have we, have we shown what you, you know, what limitations are going to be, or what dates we make a decision on this? It just seems like it's a little open in the air, um, as to, um, somebody coming back and saying, well, you said we could do this later and, and so I, you know, obviously, it may never happen. So, um, I don't know if there's any way to tighten this up, so we know what's going to be happening and what may or may not happen in a certain date, and after that, it's back in an open area that has to be reapproved, I, I think that would be a more cautious approach.
And just for clarification, are you talking about the curb and gutter, the sidewalks, or anything else in particular? Or all of it?
I ge, I guess, I, I'm talking about the, the layout in general as you've got it and the, all the different things that are, that, as you've explained them and, um, apparently wish to have them accepted as being, um, may or may not be done and may, and how be done, and right now, it's, you know, it's hard for me to assimilate all those things without dates and times. Um, and if that should lead us to a position where we've agreed to something that would not meet requirements.
What, I think anything we do would have to come back before this, before the Plan Commission, you know, so you'll have approval and review on anything that might happen on this lot in the future. Ours is just kind of our envision when we, um, developed this property and looked at what we're doing and where we located things with the property. You know, that's what we're doing. My other thing is, you know, you'll see kind of where we've put in our parking lot and stuff, and lots of times, we don't like to put stuff in that then we know we're going to have to tear out or do some more work and rework it for the second phase. And I think that's probably as much of the concern, if anything else, is that, you know, the future development is going to be down along the streets somewhere. And that's going to, what we do with the building is going to affect by the grades. You're probably going to have some new stormwater requirements, depending on what it is, they might adjust a little bit that. So we just try not to spend a lot of money on something that's going to have to be probably maybe tore up or damaged or redone in the future, we like to do things once, kind of get them right the first time, rather than come back on that. So we're not disagreeing that, I think in the long run, that does need curb and gutter, and we're going to do that, but we'd like to do that at the same time. So when we're coming in and doing construction for that second part, that we're not damaging stuff, say, as a sidewalk or as a curb and gutter actually to do the new construction for the second part. So that's our main goal, it's not that we don't want to do it, it's just we want to actually kind of do it, that we don't tear it up and put it, attribute it toward the project that's going to be happening at that location. I did have one question too on the sidewalk. I don't think our sidewalk, if it go up, actually. I don't think our sidewalk, if it go up actually Highway N right now, will connect to anything?
Not to the north, it would not. But it would provide you a connection down to the traffic signal.
Yeah, but, and I don't think there's anything on the other side of the road either, if we're crossing up.
Yeah, there's sidewalk along the east side of.
Is there? I didn't think there was, maybe there is.
All the way up to Cedar Brook.
Yeah. So ours is, yeah, kind of the sidewalk. Again, I'm probably going to, when the next park comes in, I'm probably going to damage that and have to replace it. So that's, we're just trying not to have to do that twice. And I did talk to Maggie a little bit and there's not, maybe she wants to explain. I didn't, there isn't like that where you have staff or kids coming back and forth from, because the other one has crossed the road, you know, not that far away. So it isn't that our staff or our children are coming back. This is a after-school program. So it's got a separate staff and it's actually got separate kids actually at this program. Because I raised the same question, that, well, don't we want a sidewalk that's going to come through? That you're going to use that for your staff and use it for the kids and the children? And she might be able to explain it better than I am. But at that point, she said, no, it's not probably something that will happen at this location, so.
Hello again. I'm Maggie Gesner, the owner of this facility and this proposal that we're looking to get approved tonight. Basically, we are looking for, for more space for our families. We've outgrown our current facility. We're adding four-year-old kindergarten through the district at our current facility, starting this fall. And that's going to take over the space where our after-school children currently are. There's not, as you know, not a ton of commercial property or lots available in Stoughton. We've explored all the options and settled on this property because it was within close proximity to our current facility, which is helpful for our families dropping off and picking up. This building will be after-school from three to six, Monday through Friday. The only time it'll be full day is during the summer and non-school days. The reason we are, you know, trying to keep costs down here is because it is just 36 children. We're adding, we are incurring quite a bit of expense by just getting water and sewer to the site. That's not already there. And yeah, Phase Two, we have a vision to add to that, obviously, as, as we're able to financially in the future. Perhaps a rental facility with commercial, as Jerry said, and possibly residential as well on that, that frontage. But since the daycare doesn't necessarily need that, that frontage, that part of 51 and N, we have it set back. And it gives us playground space as well. But yeah, as far as walking between facilities, we don't envision that happening because of, of just the, we have buses picking up the kids from school, taking them back to the after-school site. Parents will be picking up at that location.
Did you have a question?
More of a comment. The, your request to defer on sidewalk and the buffer for the residential side, sitting on council, I also have to weigh what is best for community, not just for your development. When it comes to the, where we have a very strong delineation between two different types of zoning types, especially when it's residential, I will always defer to the residential side and to lessen the impact on their properties. So I am not apt to, to allow that to be deferred. I'm more so for the curb and gutter because of just its location on County N. As far as the sidewalk goes, I do not like designing or having developments designed which basically look like they're designed for cars. And the way this looks right now, that's the way that would, it is. There's, there's, as Commissioner Barman said, there is no walk, walking access to that property. Be it as it may, that you may only have it for three hours a day for, but then in the summertime, you will have it for longer periods. And there may be people who will walk there. It's, it's part of the perception of what is allowable in the community and what the community wants. So those are my comments on regards to your deferments that you're asking about.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Oliver Pricke, Caravella?
Yeah, I do have to agree with the other commissioners regarding the pedestrian accessibility. The only thing that I'm looking at that, I don't know if this is a potential thing that could be an option is, especially since it would be something that would have to be built somewhat and then removed later, depending on the next phase of this project. But where there's a, I believe there's, there's dumpsters and, I don't know, I guess you could call that a turnaround there at the south, just south of the proposed building. I don't know if something could potentially be extended from that parking lot to connect to the sidewalk that goes along 51. If that would be a.
Bring it down along.
Potential workaround, I'm just kind of throwing that out there is.
Down along the west side, kind of the left, exactly.
Like, yeah, connecting that to the sidewalk. I don't know if that's a potential.
Well, that would be connecting to the existing sidewalks and connecting to Stoughton, you know, I think a little better. Where the ones that we're doing, kind of wrapping around and doing that right now on the other side there, it's, there will be future activity, but it's just not quite there. I think that might be a better option for actually just getting us to, if we're going to get street traffic, it's probably going to be coming there pedestrian traffic versus coming from the other direction.
Commissioner Barman?
Following up on that, because that's the, that's the location I was thinking of as well. When you had talked about having a new urbanist approach to where the building of Phase Two might be situated, you had mentioned in passing that you wanted to still have visual access to the daycare facility. I'm assuming that would be in that same general area that you'd be able to have the sightlines up and the building would be more to the, to the east.
Yeah, we're trying to gauge the corner with the future building.
Right.
We figure that's the most important part, just to grab that.
So it might not be something that would have to be removed? If that's still going to be an open space corridor there that will draw the eye up to the other building along that same corridor, you could have the pedestrian connection. And it might not have to be a five-foot wide street, street code sidewalk as long as there is access, pedestrian access to. Because it's interior to the site. I mean, I don't know what the city requirements would be in terms of an interior pedestrian access. It might be more in the range of three to four feet, as long as it's ADA width versus the full five foot, so.
One question too, we're on a hard surface there, would an asphalt surface work for that?
I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah, okay.
And again, I, it's interior to the property, so I don't think it has to be the same design specs as a sidewalk.
It sounds like more of a trail than a sidewalk.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that, if that replaces the sidewalk or not.
Well, no, it doesn't replace the sidewalk that would be eventually built around the outside of the property, but it would provide pedestrian access interior to the property connected to Main Street.
So you're suggesting that in order to defer the sidewalk, they could put this trail in there and, at least until the sidewalk would be installed later?
I would be more comfortable with delaying the sidewalk along N if there was pedestrian connection where we're talking. But I, I'm a little concerned still though that if, because I know how development goes. We might, we might say it's fine to delay now and then Phase Two never happens because of the economy. So if at some point, I don't know if you can have a sunset clause that if the Phase Two doesn't happen within five years, that they still have to go in and put that sidewalk in, that it will only be late, delayed up to a certain point? I mean, I don't know if that, if that can be something that the commission can include as part of our approval of the conditional?
I think, I think it can be a condition that the council would have to consider.
Okay.
I mean, ultimately, the council would have to make a, a finding on the deviation from the ordinance related to that.
Any follow-up from anybody? Commissioner Seltzer?
Sure, thank you. I just, I, I think also we should have some condition and there should be a time limit though that would, would be, mean that you wouldn't need to get into this right at the start or anything. But I think there has to be a date. I think it would be helpful to this if there were a date at which, no matter what's done, there'd be some completion of sidewalk and/or asphalt walk or some other proposal that comes forward if you don't want to do it now because you wouldn't know exactly what you want to do. But it would leave the opportunity to maybe do things differently if it were brought forward and approved. But at the same time, some kind of time limit on when it's not just left with certain standard requirements that are just not being met. So that's not a quid pro quo, that's a sine qua non, without which there is none. So I, I just think there should be some timeline as to what would happen if nothing else gets developed, the economy, whatever it does. And, and we come back and you say, at this point, we're going to do something about creating some sidewalk or asphalt walk or something to improve if nothing else is done. And I don't know that that would be that hard and be happy to hear a disagreement about it.
So you're looking for them to propose a timeline or are you going to suggest one?
I'm not going to suggest it because, but, you know, I would be looking at, if I were involved in it, I would be thinking, you know, give us a year, come forward again. And then the second year, something must be done, you know. But, but be looking for something along those lines that we're moving forward.
Okay, I see your hand up.
I was thinking, if you threw some numbers around, like in five, you know, if we don't, we're not back in with a proposal, moving ahead with that, that, you know, it's, something's got to be taken care of and done with that, yeah. That seems like a reasonable amount, yeah.
Five years, are you guys okay with putting a trail in there?
I think if we can do it in asphalt or whatever, I think we're probably okay with that, yeah.
Any questions or comments or concerns about that proposal? Or how's that sitting with you guys?
In terms of the timeframe, I was in that three to five year range. I mean, you want at least three years for the other facility to start making some money and paying things back. So the money, you know, if we're talking about deferment of the, the, you know, the ability of the, of the whole project to support the investment. I mean, I think three years, three to five years is a reasonable expectation. So I could fall anywhere on that end, depending on my other commissioners here. And I'm, I'm a landscape architect, so I, I'm perfectly fine. It doesn't even have to be a straight shot. You can even make it, straight would make some sense based on the way you've laid everything else out. But if it had some other visual interest to it, I'd be fine with that too. But some kind of pedestrian connection along that same visual corridor that you're planning to have, that will not have to be tore out for Phase Two.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll look at our two council members because ultimately, the recommendation's going to go to council and you guys are going to be carrying the torch. What, what are you thinking?
Well, I, I would like to see something in the design that's, if it's going to be deferred like up to five years, then it's going to have to be constructed of something that's going to be substantial enough that's going to make it safe and usable for up to five years. So I'm not sure if just a standard, you know, laying down some asphalt would tackle that. You know, maybe a much shorter term, an asphalt surface might be sufficient, but. That's one of my thoughts.
Well, I think we're thinking the asphalt would be, if you're in that three to five year range, whatever, if we're hitting that point, whatever, then, you know, something else is going to, probably the sidewalk's going to at that point. Yeah, because that sounds like that's probably our sunset clause that if that went away, you're going to go into a concrete walk out by the streets when it's all done.
Is the parking surface that's laid out there, is that concrete or is that asphalt?
That's asphalt.
That's asphalt.
There's sidewalks kind of shown along the stalls, in front of the stalls there and along the edge.
Yeah.
And that's, that's concrete.
That's concrete. But the actual parking lot itself is asphalt?
Right.
And I'm, I'm assuming that they'll be designing the parking lot surface and the asphalt there to last more than three to five years?
That'd be the same thing, we'll design it the same standards for the parking lots. We've got a gravel base underneath that and that's got to be able to stand up, you know, so.
So I, I think, I think if they design it to the same standards as the parking lot, I think you're in good shape with the asphalt. I mean, if that's the way they decide to go.
Are you willing to make that recommendation?
Yeah, I, I'm trying to figure out how best to word it.
Well, I think maybe Rodney can help you with some of the wording together. You guys can figure that out, you always do.
I would, I would move that we recommend to the council approval of the conditional use permit with the conditions that, including, I should say, including the request to delay the sidewalk and curb and gutter along Highway N with the condition that when Phase One is developed, at the same time Phase One is developed and at the same time the parking lot's developed for Phase One, that a pedestrian connection is built between the facility and Main Street that's at the same standards as the, the other paving construction.
And then you're.
And at the, oh, the timeframe, yes.
Referring to sidewalks.
We would delay it up to.
Sidewalks, curb and gutter?
I'd say sidewalks, curb and gutter, both I'm comfortable with. And I'm, I don't know if we need to say that we're fine with the excess parking. But considering the layout of Phase Two, I'm fine with the, I mean, it makes sense to design the parking lot flow the way it is now. So I would also approve the, the development of more parking than, than is required for the site. And again, I guess, you guys have a preference of three versus five or somewhere in between? Split the difference at four years? All right.
Prefer three, but if we split the difference at four?
Okay, three years, four years from now, from today? I mean, I guess we have to have a start point for that date. So we'll say from, four years from now. If the Phase Two does not, is, has not started yet, then the curb and gutter needs to, and the sidewalk along that needs to come in.
And then the last point was the screening, anything on that? Are we good with that?
I guess I'm, I'm not sure what the, it sounded like in their letter that they were going to go ahead with the screening. But they were just saying because of that investment, it makes it harder due to the others, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's.
Rights.
So it's not a requirement?
So I think all the.
They're installing it as, as it's required.
Yeah, it's what's proposed, they're installing the screening as, as meets code.
All right. Okay, so now we just got to take all that and condense it, you think?
Hopefully I was.
I think we, I think we have the intent, right?
Yeah, so you're going to require a pedestrian route from the building to the main line, Main Street sidewalk.
Yes.
Hard surface, asphalt, curb, or, or concrete, whatever, as part of this initial phase.
Yes.
You're allowing delay of installation of both sidewalk and curb and gutter along County Highway N for up to four years from today.
Yes.
And you're including both curb and gutter and sidewalk in that delay discussion?
I, I, in my proposal, yes. I mean, unless you guys, unless city staff feels like one of those.
I would suggest our ordinance is stronger about the sidewalk requirement than it is about the curb and gutter requirement.
We don't own the road.
I, I'm not here to tell you there aren't challenges with that right of way. There's a tight road, road right of way there and it's going to be, it's going to take some design work to get everything in there properly.
For the curb and gutter?
Combination curb and gutter and sidewalk would be tight. I think it can be done, but it might be, it's, it was designed as a rural cross-section. So just slabbing on curb and gutter is not always that easy, so.
So I guess to the question, so along Main Street, where there is an existing walk there that's in bad shape, you know, I guess our initial thought was we were going to patch and repair that and make that a usable walk through that. But that new walk down in that area, once we know what's going on in that area, that that would go in then at the same time within that four-year time period?
I'm sorry, I missed.
So are we talking Highway N and also along Main Street, Highway 51? This stretch right through there? There's an existing walk there right now?
Yes.
So we're going to repair that walk in this first part of the project?
Yep.
Okay, all right, that's what I was asking.
Just repairing it at this point.
So really, the, the question is, is should we require the curb and gutter in four years or should we?
Oh, oh, so, so that's what you're saying, Rodney, is that maybe within four years, it might still be too soon to do a good curb and gutter job?
I, yes.
Potentially.
Yeah.
Ah, okay, now, now I see what you're saying.
I'm glad you helped, Mayor.
Okay. Okay.
No problem.
Is he reassessing what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, our, my main concern is that the sidewalk will, will definitely get built whether Phase Two goes in or not.
On, on County N.
On County N.
So, in four years, the sidewalk needs to be done and at that point, we'll, we'll take another look at the curb and gutter.
That's, I can live with that myself.
We'll reassess the curb and gutter in four years. Are you guys okay with that? I don't see President Mieske over there, no expression, it always scares me.
A grin.
No, I'm fine with that.
All the person Seltzer.
Just, just a question, would that include landscaping that is normally required for that kind of sidewalk? And, and the other separate kind of subject is, there's no reason why in three years, a proposal can't, you know, a mod, a, a modified proposal couldn't be brought forward based on what you're doing, it's not like you're locked into this certain thing, but you are locked into city code. So, you know, it, it doesn't mean that the council three years from now would, would not listen to this and say, "Okay, we got what you want to do and, and we agree with it."
So, we can word it where they had, have up to four years, so if they wanted to do it earlier, maybe it'll be more cost effective and they'll be positioned to do it, sure.
Yeah, earlier or later, of course they can do it earlier, they do it anytime they like, I think. But my main question would be, does that include the landscaping required or is there such a landscaping required for city sidewalk?
There's not per se onsite landscaping requirements for an onsite, for the sidewalk aspect of it, they're meeting the onsite landscaping requirements with what they've got proposed here at this point.
I think what he's looking at is, is the street tree ordinance?
Yeah, and I think you can appreciate, I, I don't know if they could even get street trees in the Dade County right of way, nor, nor do I even know if they'd be allowed. I, I don't know the answer to that because it's not a right of way. So, the area along County N is, if you will, outside of our jurisdiction for, for street trees.
Is that the same, for not just street trees, but the grass buffer between the parking area and the sidewalk? You know, if we're talking about bringing up another looped lane coming up along in there with more parking, and I assume you might want, are you going to have perpendicular parking on both sides of that lane going up or just toward the building?
Uh, I don't think I can get two sides, it might be just toward the building, we have to look at stormwater too, because I want to do, we're thinking like a stormwater type features are coming in that driveway too, that that doesn't get too narrowed, so we're going to some...
My rough calculations is it's going to be too tight to have double-sided perpendicular and still have a, a grass buffer between the parking and the sidewalk. So, I envision it as being as, adding another row of perpendicular there and then having the room to have landscaping.
Any, any additional site modifications would have to be brought back and be compliant with the code at the time, so.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, does everybody have the intent of, I think that was a motion, was there a second?
We haven't had a second yet, so.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay. All right, any more discussion? Did you guys understand? Did you follow all that? Hopefully you're okay with that. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries.
There's still the site plan resolution. The site plan is a separate action within the CUP, we, the CUP is what you just acted on. The site plan consideration I think you'd include in here is your discussion about the pedestrian connection to Main Street.
All right, so that motion carries.
Well, they didn't make a motion on that one yet.
Yes, so do we have to, do we need a discussion on the site plan? I mean, I can make a comment.
The site plan, yep. Yep, you want to make a motion or you want to comment on it?
Well, I'll just, I'll make a motion because I think we've covered it. I would move that we approve the site plan with the condition, the same condition, that when we're developing the site for Phase One, that we provide the pedestrian connection between the facility and Main Street on the east or on the west side of the property.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
Second by Seltzer. And any more discussion on that item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that one also carries.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight is a request by the city of, to approve a certified survey map to split the properties along Glacier Marine Drive.
So, at least some in this room understand the city's in the process of building Glacier Marine Drive, expansion of the Business Park North. This CSM, north is on the top of the page, this four lot or five lot with the stormwater area is proposed to create parcels that are already, one of which is already under a purchase agreement. Lot one, in the upper right-hand corner of the page, is under contract with exclusively Roses to build on and subsequent action tonight, we'll be looking at parcel number three with the Grosso proposal. So, the CSM would create the parcels that we see necessary for those two entities and leave two parcels for development in that area.
Any initial questions or comments on this one? Otherwise, it looks like we would be looking for a recommendation to the city council.
So, just clarification.
Clarification, maybe I can highlight, out lot one, the big parcel there.
That's our fifth one?
That's a stormwater management.
Okay, so that's the fifth lot?
Correct.
Okay, because I kept looking for lot number five.
Yep.
All right. I would move that we recommend to, that the common council approves the certified survey map, creating the five new lots.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Caravelo. Any discussion on this one? So, if all goes well, that'll leave us with two remaining lots, with little two-acre lot and a 5.33 lot, but we'll talk about another one here shortly. No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. The next item is number nine, is to approve a conditional use permit for multiple principal buildings, including in the site plan approval at 441 Glacier Marine Drive. Anything before we go into the public hearing?
Just a quick recap, the map on the screen, I just mentioned lot three is the site that we'll be discussing as part of this CUP and site plan request. The request is to create a multi-building, multi-tenant, leasable space for, for light industrial type uses and its proposal would be constructed over multiple years, upwards of four to five years, approximately two buildings each year to be constructed on the site.
All right, any questions or comments before we go into a public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the regular meeting, open it up for the public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak on the conditional use permit? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and reopen for our regular business. We would be looking for a recommendation of the council.
It's ugly.
The Grossos are here, if you have any questions for them. Otherwise, that would entertain a motion. Sure.
And it's probably here and I'm just having a hard time zeroing in on it, but what's the, what's the approximate square footage of these units?
About 6,000 square feet.
So, each building's about 6,000?
Each building is 6,000.
Okay, and then they're divided up into separate units within size?
There's, there's four units in each building, some of the buildings are almost 7,000 square feet.
Okay, so the smallest...
Six thousand up to seven thousand square feet a building.
So, the smallest units in some of those buildings might be in the 1,000 square foot range all the way up to...
Yeah, one unit's, some of them are 2,400 or a little more, yes.
Okay, good, thanks.
Some of them are up to 2,800.
Okay.
2,680 square feet.
All right, thank you. Those are the ones with the double bays?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we're looking for a recommendation to the city council. Do you guys have any thoughts or questions or trying to digest it or?
I, I guess I'm looking more at, at the, I'd love, I like the layout of the site in terms of the parking flow and the building orientation. I'm just trying to make sure I'm doing my due diligence as relates to landscaping itself. So, I was, I just was taking a second peek at the landscaping side of it.
Okay.
Yeah, just to recall, there's really two separate items we're acting on, one's related to the multi-building site CUP request.
Okay.
And then we'll have a separate action on the site plan. Not, not that you shouldn't look at it at all, but...
Oh, okay, I got you. I thought we had already approved that, but that was the, the...
The CSM.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so I will, I will move that we recommend the council to approve the conditional use permit.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Caravelo. And any questions on the conditional use permit? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, I heard, what, three ayes?
Aye, aye, extension.
Four, four ayes and what an abstention. Okay, so that's approved. And then the next item is the site plan approval. Anything you want to cover on there?
Obviously, the, the site plan that I have up here is the landscape, includes the landscaping, the stormwater, the underground utilities, we can go to the other building elevation plans and the like, but the layout is a single driveway off of Glacier Marine Drive and the parking areas are shown on the site plan. Parking stalls that are in front of overhead doors don't get the, aren't counted as parking stalls if there actually is parking inside the facility. Obviously, obviously overhead garage doors imply parking, but not always are they really utilized for parking, might be used for production or some other use. So, in the event that those spaces, which have to come to us for confirm, we have to confirm compliance with each tenant that goes in these spaces, but that, that would be monitored and expected and understood and evaluated based on each application that came or each tenant that would be presented to us.
Do we, do we know that if, let's say all the tenants opt not to park any vehicles inside those overhead doors, is there enough parking, surface parking outside the building to accommodate the requirement?
I would say yes, but you also have 30-ish tenants potentially here.
Right.
And so, you have variability in that, so generally, you're not going to have the most parking intense tenants in every space. So, there, there seems like there's an opportunity to be able to comply.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? So, we'd be looking for a motion for the site plan approval?
Actually, I do have...
Oh, go ahead.
One thing, and I might be missing it. option for bicycle parking?
There is.
I'm not...
Right, number 11. You want to see it on the map?
Yeah.
All right.
I'm trying to get you there.
I'm trying to look for an icon that's a bike rack or something, but...
Looks like it's a nine-bike stall.
It's right, it's on the screen. I'm sorry, my cursor's kind of small, but essentially right off the main line shared use path on private property, so this area right in the front.
All right, so we're looking for a motion for the site plan approval then. Did you have any questions about the landscape then, Todd?
No, I just feel like I've made all the motions, but I guess I can continue my pattern tonight. I'll move that we recommend that council approve the site plan for this particular development.
It just doesn't here, doesn't have to go to council?
The site plan does not have to go to council.
Oh, that's, then I move that we recommend the site plan as presented.
Yes, there's a motion, is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Seltzer. Any discussion on the site plan? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions?
Abstention.
One abstention, okay. That motion carries. It takes us to item number 10, and that's a request by Mark Rosenbaum to approve a release of a restriction document for the County Highway N access at 1700 East Main Street, which is lot three of Eastwood Estates.
I'll just give a, an overview, this is on the other side of County N that we were just discussing. The CSM was, a plat initially was approved for Eastwood Estates. It included a plat restriction that didn't allow any access on the County Highway N. Subsequently, a CSM was approved, filed and recorded, and it was done so under the belief that they had obtained the necessary approvals for the release to allow for that 30-foot driveway entrance that we've all come to understand leads to the fast and all area and the backside of the current Weeble world. Come to find out, that didn't get properly recorded or included in all the documentation. They're now seeking the request to release that to actually accommodate that connection to County Highway N. The documentation that's necessary to do so is contained in your packet and we think that would input into effect that, that connection point to County Trunk Highway N. But it's been improved and utilized as such for 10-plus years.
16 years.
That's the plus.
Anybody have any initial thoughts or questions? All right, we'll be looking for a recommendation to the council on this one. Anybody else want to make a motion over there tonight?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Caravelo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Mieske.
Assuming your motion was to approve...
My motion is to approve a release of restriction document for this property.
Clarification's always good.
Yes.
All right, any discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Item number 11, same group, they're here for approval of a certified survey map to combine the parcels at 1700 East Main Street for future developments.
The description suits it well, just combining these two lots into one parcel, we'll be seeing development proposals at a, I believe, the next plan commission meeting for the proposed development on this site. Creating this one parcel would facilitate that development as, as one tenant.
Any thoughts or anybody looking to make a recommendation to the council on this one?
We'll go through.
The motion to Seltzer, and is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Caravelo, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Future agenda item? Future agenda items, anything from the commissioners? All right, I think-
Maybe I can just highlight one.
Rodney and Michael have a long list, I bet.
Yeah, as we talked earlier, we're gonna be looking at updates to sections of our zoning code. At the next meeting, we plan to have city attorney talk to us about the conditional use aspect of things. We remember that a year ago, there was change in legislation, so kind of picking up with that is one component of what we need to walk, walk through. And we are looking to bring a number of sections of code recommendations for your consideration and discussion and alteration, if at all possible, so that'll be in the next several meetings.
Okay. That's all we had for tonight and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I will so move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Seltzer, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.
One abstention.